Good evening and welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen's meeting Thursday, March 14, 2013. Our agenda for this evening is to approve some minutes. Then we will, I'll be reading a press release. Then we are going to take a vote on whether or not to open the warrant to insert two articles that have come up recently and close the warrant for the town meeting. Then we're going to welcome the community planning director, Mary Savage Dunham, who is going to explain to us the warrant article on medical marijuana. It's a zoning bylaw. We don't, this board doesn't vote on zoning bylaws, but we love to have an update and get it out on television what's going to happen. Then we will hear from the community preservation committee about Thaxter Park preservation, possibly including in the warrant. And we will, we also have on the agenda Article FF, turn fields over to the Recreation Commission. Then we have some reserve fund transfers. We will be looking at the budget changes that the advisory committee made to the budget that we recommended to them and decide if that we'll endorse them or not. Then there'll be some appointments and selectman town administrator reports. So I'll just move right to the first item, which is to approve minutes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 21st, February 28th, March 4th, and March 7th, 2013.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Need to take a moment out here. I'm going to read a press release, and there are copies of the press release up here for any press who are here in the room who'd like to have it. This is dated today from the Board of Selectmen's office. The Hingham Board of Selectmen is pleased to announce that we have reached a tentative agreement with Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated and several landowners to purchase approximately 18 acres of property off Recreation Park Drive. Because of its size and unique location, the town is considering the site for a wastewater treatment facility, which will include a buffer for the neighboring residential properties from surrounding commercial operations. The purchase and sale agreement between the parties is subject to town meeting approval. The property had previously been under review for a potential 177-unit residential rental development. Selectmen will open the annual town meeting warrant to insert an article seeking voter approval of the proposed $3.7 million purchase. I'm reading the press release. Laura Burns, it says here, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, said, "This purchase is consistent with the town's long-term plan to develop the South Shore Industrial Park area as a commercial tax base and to address wastewater needs in that area of town." The selectmen will be providing more detailed information in connection with the supporting warrant article, which I'm just going to offer some comments about right now. "As residents of the town are aware that we have been actively working for over two years to improve the wastewater services in the South Shore Industrial Park and the surrounding commercially zoned areas in order to promote economic development, the purpose of which is, one major purpose of which is to increase the commercial tax base and relieve some of the burden on residential taxpayers. Town meeting has voted funds to study the design of a wastewater plant. In addition, in 2011, town meeting voted to acquire a parcel of land in the industrial park as part of the overall plan. During the same time period, three separate landowners at the end of Recreation Park Drive entered into an agreement with Avalon Bay Communities for a sale of over 18 acres of land. This land lies directly across Route 3 from the industrial park and the land acquired by the town in 2011." Do you want to put the map up? I don't know if you can get that, Bob, on the monitor or not. But if we can see the map of where the property that we're proposing to purchase lies, it is directly across Route 3 from the parcel that the town purchased for wastewater treatment plant in 2011. So if Route 3 were not there, they would be contiguous. While Avalon Bay has applied for a comprehensive permit to construct 177-unit apartment building complex on the site, town officials have also been exploring with Avalon Bay the possibility of the town acquiring Avalon Bay's rights to purchase the property. Through the efforts of Ted Alexiades, the town was able to come to terms with Avalon Bay and the three property owners that allow the town to purchase this land, which is in a unique location by its proximity to the industrial park and land already acquired by the town. As part of the transaction, Avalon Bay will be providing the town with due diligence materials that will allow the town to further evaluate how the land can contribute to the overall plan to improve wastewater service in that area of town. We thank Avalon Bay for working with the town, both to create housing, including affordable units at the Hingham Shipyard, and to allow the town to acquire this land in South Hingham to improve our efforts at increasing the economic tax base in the commercial areas in South Hingham." So that is planned, and does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes?
Can you tell us where the money's coming from?
Oh, I'm so glad you said that. I was going to turn to my left and ask Mr. Alexiades to cover our plan for paying for it.
The proposal would be to bond the project over a 20-year period. Initially, we will issue short-term bond anticipation notes. The carrying costs on those notes ought to be somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 per year due to the town's outstanding credit situation. And during that time, we will evaluate how much of the land we can use for wastewater treatment plant, how much we're going to set aside for a buffer, and allocate a portion of the cost to the wastewater treatment facility and the betterment that would be assessed to the property owners that will be deriving the benefit from the wastewater treatment plant directly.
Anybody else?
I would just like to add the thanks of the board. This started about seven months ago in a phone call that I made to the chairman of Avalon, and he was very receptive to pursuing a discussion with Ted Alexiades and his staff members. That would not have happened if they had not been receptive to those initial phone calls. So the fact that we've come to a closure here this evening is the results of the Board of Selectmen and our attorneys, particularly Susan Murphy, and their attorneys, I think is something that is truly for the overall benefit of the town, and I'm happy to have been a participant in it with my colleague, Ms. Burns, and with Ms. Louder, who unfortunately is not here.
Well, yes, I just, before we move off the topic, if nobody else has any comments, I would like to recognize Selectmen Rabuffo, who took the initiative to, who had the vision to imagine this, and Ted Alexiades, who has been engaged in slow and careful discussions over the last six, seven months over this subject, and Towns Real Estate, Town Council Susan Murphy, from whom we were getting emails at 3:00 AM last week as she was trying to put together this agreement in order to be ready to take this proposal to town meeting. So I'd like to thank everybody who's been involved in this so far. Yes?
Do the neighbors know about this yet?
You are the first to know. We've been conducting this negotiation under very careful confidentiality for the last seven months, and this is the moment at which it's going public. So if they're watching tonight, they know. But that's, you were the first to know. Yes?
Does anyone have any plans to develop elsewhere in town, or is this just a strict sale without any kind of collaboration?
If they do, we don't know about them. As you know, we do already have an Avalon Bay development in town that I think is a real asset to the town. It's a beautiful place. All the people I know who live there love it. It's right next to the ferry. And so we will, as we always are, will be open to hearing any proposals that they might have for future development.
So will this at all keep the town from repelling the discussion with the Housing Appeals Committee regarding 40B developments in Hingham?
I'm sorry, will it keep the town?
Will it keep the town from repelling the discussion about?
From propelling it?
Moving it forward.
Moving it forward. You know, as you mentioned, those are, these are two very separate issues, and our, you know, our negotiations with Avalon are separate from our disagreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development about our subsidized housing inventory and how many units are on it. So this has no effect in settling that question one way or another, and so we're going to continue to look at our options for trying to get that question settled.
I just, I know you thanked a few people, but I did want to thank once more and publicly acknowledge the work of Susan Murphy. This deal came together really about a week ago, after seven months of negotiations, and I asked Susan to put together a purchase and sale agreement essentially in a week's time to move this forward under the timeframes of what the owners had requested. And you're right, the emails were coming out at 3:00 in the morning, and I wanted to thank her for that effort. Sometimes that stuff doesn't go noticed, but it was, and as you know, I was out of state for some of this weekend. I think there was 10 or 15 emails at least every few hours on this, and so thank you, Susan. The town thanks you.
And we thank your family. You remember them, I'm sure.
If there's nothing else, then I'd like to take these two votes in this order right now.
Sure. Okay. Okay, we are opening the, no, I'm going to vote first.
Well, let's do this one first, then we'll open the one.
All right. This first vote, make a motion that we make the determination that the proposed acquisition of four parcels of land, together containing approximately 18.6 acres, more or less, off Recreation Park Drive in Hingham, and identified as parcel 3 and 4 on Assessors Map 202, and parcel 4 and 5 on Assessors Map 208, collectively the property, is a unique property, land acquisition, as set forth by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16E2, and that advertising for proposals will not benefit the town of Hingham because of the location and qualities of this property, namely, its proximity to other land acquired by the town in 2011 in connection with a proposed wastewater treatment plant project to serve the South Shore Industrial Park and nearby land in order to allow economic development in those areas.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I have a second motion to execute that certain purchase and consent agreement dated on, as of March 14, 2013, by and among the town Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated and the following land sellers, David J. Chase and Thomas F. O'Brien as trustees of Southgate Realty Trust, J.F. White Contracting Company, and Alan C. Foley and Rena Elder Foley as trustees of Keshingham Trust for the acquisition by the town of four parcels of land, together containing approximately 18.6 acres, more or less, off Recreation Park Drive in Hingham, and identified as parcels 3 and 4 on Assessors Map 202, and parcels 4 and 5 on Assessors Map 208. Subject to, first, receipt by the town of counterpart signature pages from each of the foregoing parties; second, and receipt of original disclosure of beneficial forms from each of the land sellers as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 7C, Section 38, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16E, Subparagraph 2, and to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the purchase and sale agreement that we just voted to sign requires town meeting approval, obviously, so it is contingent upon the approval of town meeting. And so we'll need to put an article on the warrant to consider this purchase, so I'll entertain a motion to open the warrant.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to insert an article.
All right. We'll do both of these, all right. Will the town, A, authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to acquire four parcels of land, together containing approximately 18.6 acres, more or less, off Recreation Park Drive in Hingham, and identified as parcels 3 and 4 on Assessors Map 202, and parcels 4 and 5 on Assessors Map 208, collectively the property, on such terms and conditions that the Board of Selectmen deem in the best interests of the town? And B, vote to appropriate $3,750,000 to pay costs of purchasing the property, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether this amount shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action related thereto.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Secondly, will the town amend the general bylaws of the town of Hingham adopted March 13, 1939, as heretofore amended, as at Article 39, by striking the existing Section 2, 16 and 17, and replacing it with the following for 16?
Maybe I should explain.
Sure, go ahead.
So people know what's happening.
Yeah, let's go through.
And then we'll.
I'll pause.
Yeah.
This is a pause.
We discussed two weeks ago the question of the annual allocation plan that the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust presents to town meeting for its approval, and the reasons why it hasn't really been working out as planned when we formed the trust five years ago in terms of really providing information about what the trust is doing to the people at large. And there are a number of reasons why that's true. Usually, all of the allocations plans that have been presented so far have been the same every year. They allocate 50% of funds for preservation of affordable housing, 15% for construction of affordable housing, 15% for loan and grant programs, 15% for consultants, and 5% for administration. And the idea was that all the money that was spent in that year would be spent in those proportions, and that hasn't really worked out as a way of, it hasn't worked out for the following reasons. What we found was that a plan for allocating expenditures doesn't really meaningfully represent what is accomplished. It's based on the idea that allocating resources in a certain percentage would reflect real-world accomplishments or work done according to that percentage. In fact, if we look at the two largest projects of the trust so far, the expenditures don't reflect the accomplishments at all. The trust loaned the town $90,000 for due diligence to acquire Lincoln School Apartments, which resulted in the preservation of 60 affordable units. At 80 Beale Street, a $400,000 loan obligation was incurred, and the result was two new affordable units. We've spent on creation more than four times as much as we've spent on preservation, but we have preserved 30 times more units than we've created. So expenditures aren't really a meaningful way to reflect real-world activity. And then we had some questions about, this is, these are the questions that trust has been struggling with. What are expenditures? In the case of the two major projects so far, the trust has either recouped or expects to recoup most of the costs. Should the percentages in the allocation plan represent gross or net expenditures? We don't know, but bylaw's silent, and we didn't know how to treat that. We had questions about what is the preservation of affordable housing and what is creation? The 80 Beale Street project was begun as preservation, but when our consultants advised that the building couldn't be preserved affordably, it became a creation project when we decided to demolish and build new. So we didn't know even what category to put that in. We've also found that as volunteers, it's really unlikely for us, we're speaking after five years of experience now with the trust, this is what we've learned, it's very unlikely that we, and I say we because I sit on the trust as the selectman representative, it's unlikely that we would ever engage in more than one major project at a time. And projects are often multi-year events. It has taken almost three years to bring the 80 Beale Street project to conclusion. So in any given year, if we only have one major project, we'll automatically be spending 100% or close to that on that one item. And so any allocation plan that has any allocation other than 100% all for one thing, we will automatically be in violation of. So we felt that an allocation plan with differing percentages for different things in a given year didn't really reflect a mode of working that the trust was actually able to engage in. But finally, and the most important difficulty is that to make, try to make prospective plans are really contrary to the purpose of the trust. The purpose is to, of having the trust was to enable the town to take advantage of unexpected opportunities that appear in the real estate market, whenever they appear. And we should focus on the word unexpected. Both major projects so far were of this nature. We had no way of knowing before they presented themselves what category of expenditure they would be, and in the real world, what the trust is able to do is determined by market conditions, and hobbling the trust's ability to respond to them really negates the basic purpose of the trust. So we put our heads together and tried to decide how we might modify the bylaw that creates the trust to change the way the trust reports to the town in a way that will really be helpful, as opposed to creating a lot of confusion every year, which is what we've had. And so together with Laura Marwell, who's the advisory committee liaison to the trust, and Karen Johnson, the chairman of the advisory committee, and Tim White, the chairman of the housing trust, the four of us put our heads together and propose, we propose a bylaw change which replaces the allocation plan with a detailed and comprehensive accounting and a description of the trust's activities. And we would want it to go far beyond the categories of preservation or creation in providing information to citizens on the trust's work. So now, why don't you make that motion, and people might be able to understand what we're proposing here.
Okay. So this is a separate and distinct motion from the motion I read regarding the Recreation Road property. So I'll start at the beginning again if you indulge me. Will the town amend the general bylaws of the town of Hingham adopted March 13, 1939, as heretofore amended at Article 16, by striking the existing Section 2, Paragraph 16 and 17, and replacing it with the following for Paragraph 16? Each year, the trust shall provide to annual town meeting a transparent and detailed financial report on the year's activities, as well as a cumulative report on all the activities of the trust since inception, reflecting how the trust has used its funds. The accounting aspects of the report shall be approved as to accuracy by the town's audit committee. The report shall include, but not be limited to, A, a source of funds, B, a description of projects undertaken and the status of those projects, C, a schedule of all amounts spent, including for preservation of affordable housing, for creation of affordable housing, for grants or loans to other entities for preservation or creation of affordable housing, for administrative report, and for any other purpose permitted under this law, and D, a prospective view of the trust's expected operations for the next year to the greatest extents possible. In addition, the trust shall provide a narrative report of proposed activities to the Board of Selectmen in the fall of each year. In Paragraph 17, expenditures for the acquisition of disposition of, or disposition of real property shall be subject to approval by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen, or act on anything relating thereto.
Thank you. Second. Now, late breaking news on this is that we, it was a good, we were trying to include more forms of oversight over the work of the trust to give people comfort, so we added the new report to the Board of Selectmen because I feel like that's worked really well for the country club committee, and that was a new idea. The idea of having the audit committee review the work of the financial reports, when we asked the chairman of the audit committee about that idea, he reflected and said that he actually didn't think the audit committee could do that because it was not in the charter of the audit committee as it was written. So I'm thinking that this is, this is what the trust submitted. If we wish to support it, we would support it and suggest that the advisory committee remove the section related to the audit committee in their recommendation, and move it along and let them take care of it. That's what I was suggesting.
Mr. Alexiades?
And I've already spoken with the advisory committee liaison, Laura Marwell, about this, and suggested that what we would be doing, the town accountant would develop the financial policy procedure, structure of the accounting. The independent auditors, along with the audit committee, are in a review status to make sure that the structure is correct, and then annually, of course, review the results of operations. And that would be the relationship, as opposed to, the audit committee doesn't develop the accounting guidelines, the oversight.
Review them as they usually do. Okay. So the simplified version for all of this is that we're trying to make reality be more reflective of the actions of the housing trust. That's, this gives that flexibility.
Yeah, and I think that, I think it's really going to improve the reporting and improve people's understanding of what the trust does, to have the very detailed financial report to present to town meeting, and then the narrative in the fall, come and speak on television and tell everybody what we're doing. I actually think it's going to raise the profile of the trust quite a bit and help people understand what they're doing.
Okay. Anyway, we haven't taken the formal vote.
No, we haven't. Let me just ask if there's anybody who has any comments or questions in the room before we do that. Yes, Ms. Marwell? Please come on up.
Laura Marwell, advisory. Just another comment, we'll also require that they come before the advisory committee as well every fall, so there'll be two sets of eyeballs of the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee.
Great. That's good.
Well, I had some discussion with some members of the trust. We didn't just, you know, we, I think we mentioned that on the fly at the trust meeting last night. Could it be one meeting that?
Yes, that would be fine.
Because we're talking about volunteers here.
Yes, that would be absolutely fine.
And people were a little like, we only meet once a month anyway, so unless we have something really big going. So if it could be a joint meeting, that, people would find that acceptable and very pleasant, but to have to go to two.
Right, and the reason we thought that was important was that the Board of Selectmen appoints the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as the independent auditors, and so it seemed appropriate to have the advisory committee, which is outside of that loop, also looking in for another check and balance.
That's very reasonable.
People will be very happy to have that if we only have to go to one meeting. Thank you. Okay.
And any other questions?
Anything else?
Before we move?
Okay. So moved? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And now I'll entertain a motion to close the warrant for the 2013 annual town meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we move on to some, a discussion of some articles, and I'd like to welcome community planning director, Mary Savage Dunham, to come on up, and she's going to tell us about the article related to medical marijuana zoning.
Thank you very much. The proposed warrant article on medical marijuana is a result of the endorsement by voters of Chapter 369, an Act for the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana in 2012, which then went into effect January 1, 2013. As part of that act, the Department of Public Health is to produce regulations to further guide these medical marijuana treatment centers and how this medical product is distributed and handled within different communities across the state. Those regulations were to be produced by early spring, and so as a result of the endorsement of this act, but really no guidance or framework from the Department of Public Health as to how it would be actually implemented, the planning board proposed language for the meeting, which I believe you do have a copy of in your packet, on medical marijuana treatment centers. After a great deal of consideration, the planning board felt that it was in the best interests of the community to propose a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers, which would last until June of 2014, June 30, 2014. The purpose of the temporary moratorium is to allow the town to carefully study the potential impacts of medical marijuana treatment centers, and then thoughtfully recommend zoning ordinance amendments, if necessary, to address and guide any of the town's concerns in the context of the town's planning goals and objectives. So in very basic terms, all of the regulations and framework for how this is going to be implemented aren't there yet, so it was premature for the planning board, in their opinion, to take any steps to enact any ordinances at this time. Thank you.
I would just add that the town of Wakefield had their ban on the licensure of these facilities within their town turned down by the Attorney General. And so the message is out that a moratorium is reasonable, an outright ban is going to be viewed as unconstitutional.
Okay. No, you explained it very well, I think, at this juncture. No, I understand where we're at.
Very good.
It reminds me a little bit of the cell phone, that, you know, you can't, when we were looking at an overlay district to allow cell phones in various places, it was pretty clear that you had to allow cellphone towers somewhere, that it was not going to be legal to ban cellphone towers in the whole town, and it's a similar sort of situation.
I mean, clearly, you know, the voters spoke pretty loudly. No one is looking to disrespect the voters' will, but No one is looking to disrespect the voters' will, but there were a lot of unintended consequences that needed to be, need to be worked out, and the state is working diligently to try to do that, and it's hard for us to react. So I think prudence would, would suggest a moratorium. An outright ban, I think, would be just like when we went through the adult zoning many years ago. Communities tried to say, we don't want that in our community, we're going to ban it, and unfortunately, that's not constitutional.
Okay. Anybody have any, sorry?
Do we have any dates as to when we think, I know the answer to this, but for the purposes of asking a question that I know the answer to. We don't have any dates yet from the state as to when they might issue those guidelines?
I had heard that originally it was to be early April, and then there was a press release from the state saying that they thought it might be more closer to May. I haven't heard anything more recently with regard to a date.
Yeah, the hearings, the public comment, the regulations.
And you, sorry. And tell people who you are, please.
Susan Murphy, Special Rail State Council. There was just a, it came out at the same time of the articles about the Attorney General decisions. The, the regulations are coming out for public comment in about two, three weeks, and then they hope to issue the final regulations around May 1st.
Okay. Any other comments or questions that anybody would like answered? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we welcome the Community Preservation Committee to talk to us about Thaxter Park and what your recommendations for this year might be for helping our friends at Thaxter Park to the greatest extent possible by, according to law.
Three weeks ago, we presented to you the full slate of recommendations.
Could you tell people who you are?
I'm sorry. Dan Coffin, Chairman of the CPC. Three weeks ago, we presented you with a full slate of recommendations of 10 articles for the CPC funds to be used for this year. And at that point in time, we withdrew one of them, and it related to the Thaxter Park project. And the reason for withdrawing it at that point was, we had advice from Town Council that the way the article had been written and the scope of the work to be done was inconsistent with the Community Preservation Act. And we had gone back to the folks at Thaxter Park and the Housing Authority and asked them to retool that proposal so that it was consistent with the, with the act. Subsequently, we had another meeting with them, and they have done that, and have recommended to us a preservation activity. Essentially, the law, as we were advised, does not allow for the rehabilitation of the project, but only the preservation of the project, which is a fine distinction that is drawn within the law. The folks of the Housing Authority anticipated that the law, when it changed last year to expand the scope to include recreational projects, might have been expanded at the same time to include housing projects. That's not the case.
So now we have to go and do that, right?
Now we have to go and do that.
Let's do that.
And unfortunately, we have the conundrum that the Community Preservation Committee has a reserve essentially of $300,000, give or take, that is for housing-related activities. And we'd like very much to use this to help the folks at Thaxter Park. The dilemma is that the way the law is defined doesn't allow us to do that. And so we have crafted an article here that we think is consistent with the law, allows us to provide $4,500, which is significantly less than what they'd asked for, but is, by agreement, equal to the amount that we can, under the law, you know, provide. At the same time, we've assured the folks at Thaxter Park that we would like to go back to the Commonwealth. We've already made contact with Representative Murphy, have called into Senator Headland's office, and have arranged a meeting with the Community Preservation Coalition, you know, to see if there aren't other ways in which we can, you know, address both the law and perhaps modify the law, at the same time, make some of those funds, these funds available for the Thaxter Park project. And so it's our recommendation that we appropriate $4,500 from the housing reserve of the Community Preservation Pool for use in the preservation of the Thaxter Park project this year.
Okay, just so I understand how this is going to work, in the article that is on the warrant and has already gone to the advisory committee, there is no mention of Thaxter Park?
No, we met with the advisory committee last week, and they approved the article that we have before you tonight.
Okay, so this would be, it would just appear in their recommendation? Okay. And so it's a question, will we support that recommendation? Okay.
Okay. Just for the public's benefit, I'd like to add that Selectman Burns and I met with Representative Murphy to voice our support for whatever he could do to assist us on this much-needed effort out there. So I thank you and the committee for what you did, Dan.
Anything else?
No.
Comments or questions from anybody? Yes, Jesse?
Can you clarify what Thaxter Park is?
Oh, I'm sorry. The Hingham Housing Authority's property, consisting of senior and handicap housing and some family housing. And it's called Thaxter Park because it's on Thaxter Street.
Can you read the article? For the record, I think?
Yeah.
Let me, I'm in the habit of reading articles this evening, so. The Article V, will the town appropriate $4,500 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to be used by the Hingham Housing Authority for certain building preservation activities, specifically earthwork and grading at the Thaxter Park housing development to improve drainage and flooding issues on, in several of the buildings and apartments?
So I'll entertain a motion to support that article?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Hope we can do more next year.
I hope so.
Change in, okay, that vote, okay. All right. And the last article we were going to discuss tonight is Article FF, the article proposing to turn the recreation fields under control of the Board of Selectmen over to the Recreation Commission. And I think at this point, we've thought about it for quite some time. We've had a couple of discussions about it. And I just, I'll just share, I've been spending a lot of time thinking about this, and what came up when we investigated, I have historically been wanting to do this, been wanting to turn these fields that, that are under the control of the Board of Selectmen over to the Recreation Commission, because, A, they managed them in the first place for the Board of Selectmen, and B, it just makes sense. However, come to find out that when you turn property over to the Recreation Commission, according to law, it comes under the protection of Article 97 of the Constitution, which is for protection of open space. And lands that are under Article 97, the town is very severely restricted in its flexibility in terms of what it can do with those properties going forward. And that's a good thing, because the purpose of it is to protect open space. But we have had trouble over the years in trying to do things with Article 97 lands that are actually meant to enhance open space opportunities, and, but it takes, it takes a two-thirds roll call vote of the legislature to allow the town even to move fields from one entity of the town to another. And it's articles that come under Chapter 97 for a number of reasons, and I really want to thank our Town Council, who explained how that happens. Basically, it has to do with how the, how the properties are acquired. If they're acquired, any property that's acquired with a purpose of preserving resources or for open space is automatically protected by Article 97. And where we are right now in this process is, there are, we have fields that are under control of the Board of Selectmen. Some of them may already be under Article 97, but we don't know, because we haven't gone back and looked at the deeds and the instruments of how they were acquired. They may be, they may not be. We don't know. And we also do know that we're already involved in trying to make an Article 97 kind of change with the Carlson Fields, where we have been proposing, we would like, we've been proposing to the state a swap of some land where we would put all of Carlson Fields into Bearcove Park in exchange for a piece of property up front near the road to take out of Bearcove Park. We propose to give four times as much land into the park under Chapter 97 than we'd take out. And this process is already taken, over a year, and could take another year. And so, even though what we're doing is very much in the interest of the increase of open space in the town and putting more lands under Article 97, it takes years to go through this process. And so, at this point, we don't know what the, what the implications would be of turning these fields over to the Rec Commission, because we don't know which ones are under Article 97, which ones aren't. If we did, if they were all under Article 97, I would say, let's do that, because nothing changes. They're already under Article 97, go over to the Rec Commission, they're already under Article 97. But we don't know that, and it, and title searches are expensive and take a long time. And I just feel like we need to understand the implications of this vote before we do it. So I have decided to not recommend, on my part, that the advisory committee approve this article and hope that the Board of Selectmen will take it up again next year, do the title search, and find out what the implications of such a, such a, such a vote would be. So that, that's where I am.
Okay. Well, I voiced my opinion, as you know, in the presentation some weeks ago. So that's just another reason that I would be in agreement. And I would think that we would pursue a title search and revisit the issue when we finish that.
Okay. Well, in order for this article even to go forward, the Board of Selectmen would have to vote to declare these properties surplus, and I don't think that there is anybody on the board prepared to offer such a motion. So that sort of takes care of that.
Right.
So any comments or thoughts that anybody would like to share? Yes? Please join me, Mr. Jones.
Whatever you're comfortable, Frank.
Frank Jones, Hank, Chairman of Hingham Recreation. Going back four years ago, it was, I believe Bruce, it was your initiative that started this, that we wanted to do the fields and get the fields under, because the statement that you used is the recreation, the Selectmen should not be in the recreation business. So that's where this whole thing started. So we had four years to look at this. And as you said, Laura, that the title search, do the title search over this year to look at these properties. So we're going to do a title search, from what I'm understanding, from what you're saying, is they're going to be doing a title search on these properties anyways. The Town Council, when they, when they asked for an opinion, and her even, her answer came back that it's based on a foregoing, the transfer is legally feasible. So they are legally feasible to do it. That was hers on March 1st, when she came back with her, her opinion. A fair amount of time and research we got in terms and acquisitions of the parcel. So, I mean, I don't understand why now, at the 11th hour, that we turn around and say, oh, we didn't know about this Article 97, when in fact, numerous times, as I said before, I told you over the last four years, this is how it works. And Bruce, you asked me for, you know, a date. Well, I can tell you, as recently as February 7th, I went back and watched the, the meeting. On February 7th, I told everybody exactly how this process works, that we're going one way, you have to go back the other way. So I did tell everybody how it works. So I know, at least on February 7th, and numerous times before that, I've told everybody. You told us when we first started it, you gave us a year to see how we did. I thought we did very well. I think we did very well. The fields are in great shape that are under our control, that we had, that belonged to you. The scheduling is done, there's no complaints about the scheduling. There's teams that come in to use it for profit that are using it. I will say that most of the fields, on a whole, most of the fields really don't generate any money. There are only two that really do generate any money, and that's because there's outside town or outside for-profit groups that come in and use the fields. On the rec agreement that we signed last year on, on March 8th, Number 6, and it is the intent of the Board of Selectmen to put forth a warrant article in 2013 annual meeting to transfer the town fields under control of the Board of Selectmen to Hingham Recreation. That was an agreement we all signed. That we signed out on March 8th. So it was our feeling at that time that we should go ahead and do something with them. You asked me that night, was the vote unanimous? And I told you, no, it wasn't. And you asked me the dissenting vote. Well, I'll have to tell you, it looks like the smartest guy in here was the one that didn't, and that was Mr. Keys. He told us that time not to sign an agreement because something like this was going to happen. I have to say, maybe he is intuition. I'll ask him for tonight's lottery number, maybe it'll come up with something. But I, I don't understand now why, when after all this time, with the four years, the work they've done in the fields, the management they've done in the fields, our director, Mark Thorell, has done a fantastic job with them, to turn around and tell us now that, oh, we're not going to turn the fields over because we weren't aware of Article 97, or what these fields are. There's no reason why, I can't see, you can't put it before the vote to say that we'll, we'll turn these fields over, and you could feel, find out which ones are not under Article 97. Why can't you turn the fields over that are under Article 97? It doesn't make any sense to me. Everybody said that we've done a great job. The board itself, the Board of Selectmen has said that. I know Irma Law is not here tonight, and she was one of our odd supporters all the way. She was totally in favor of this. So I would ask you to reconsider and think about this before you pass the vote. I respect what you've done, but I think you should respect what we've done and the work that we've done on these fields, and what we continue to do. If you're thinking of turning these fields over, if at some point you needed a land swap on something like that, I can't see any board that it was that, that much of a, a deal for the town to turn around and say, no. We've already had that happen once before, and you ask why we don't want to get into a long-term agreement, as was suggested also by the lawyer, is because it's happened once before, where we had a field for well over 30 years, where we had Beale Street. And all of a sudden, it's found out that, oh, wait a minute, Recreation doesn't own that, the Board of Selectmen own it. So we'll take that away, and we'll give it, and then they turn around, and we didn't get the field back. It was turned around, it was leased out. That was one case. The second one is now we're working with, we find out now that we think we're managing the field for the Board of Selectmen, we find out that it's still owned by the school department. So the school department now has a lacrosse field that we weren't aware of. So these are things that we're talking about, and I can't understand, so you wonder why we don't want to do a long-term agreement? That's one of the reasons why, because we don't know, you know, we don't know how long it's going to be before these fields are taken away from us. So we do these work on it. So I ask you to reconsider, and I think about it, and I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. This has been a long process, and what's curious to me, as I said last time, is that we have an agreement that is working. There are some concerns, as Laura just explained, under Article 97, which would get, could possibly get in the way of our ability to manage land that is under our jurisdiction. And that is the new piece of information in addition to the issue before. I thought we all worked for the town of Hingham, the school department, the recreation department, and the Board of Selectmen, and we have an arrangement that works. The ownership issue is befuddling to me, because it's owned by the town of Hingham, and that's who we work for. And as long as we're together on that, and it's, and it has been working, as to, I agree with your point that you made, the ownership is the town. It's not the Board of Selectmen, it's not the Recreation Department, and it's not the school department. We have an arrangement where we have three principal entities, and they seem to be working well in our, in my opinion, and that's why I would not change my opinion tonight.
Well, I just take the opportunity once again to express my admiration for what, how the Recreation Commission has managed those fields. You have done a terrific job, and I hope it continues. I'll just suggest, I have a, I don't know, but I have a suspicion about how a field that you managed for 30 years turned out not to be under your control. And I would guess that the reason was that at the time that the rec started managing it, there was no formal agreement made. It was probably just a handshake. Things happened differently 30 years ago. And that the, the rights and responsibilities of your board versus this board were not laid out on a piece of paper that everybody could look at and say, this is, this is my responsibility, this is yours, this is how we're going to do it. And for that very reason, I would recommend entering into a long-term written agreement that, so that you can go back and point to it and say, you can't take this responsibility away from us, you signed it. And I think that's a, that's actually an argument, in my opinion, in favor of a long-term management agreement. So I would encourage the board, while the Board of Selectmen is resolving this title question, to, when, when Mr. Paget was here the other week, he said the management agreement didn't work. And so I invite the discussion about what doesn't work about it, so we can fix that, because I know we can fix that in the interim. Mr. Keys?
Mark Keys, Recreation Commission. I think the board was well aware of 97, way back before even you people on the board. And this was the previous board, when he took the land illegally back here, it was recreation land, and gave it to Habitat. Never went to the legislature. I asked them for two years, following that passage of that piece of land back here, to show me any proof that they went to the legislature and got, really, they did not. He took it illegally. So, I mean, if you don't even honor the 97, then how could we trust you doing or assigned a agreement? And if you're not on the board two or three years from now, and it's a new, completely board, and they don't agree with this agreement, they could throw it in the wastebasket. And we would back where we started. So unless you turn it over the proper way, which is go to the Legislature, get it under 97, so it's controlled by Recreation, just as conservation is controlled, and you don't want to take conservation land, and you can't take it. It's the same way with Recreation. Why should you be able to be able to? You just mentioned it. You want to take the ballparks away and turn it over to Bearcove Park. So where's the self-recreation? It doesn't. Sorry, I don't think your agreement would work. And I know Bill Wise is a negotiator, and he tried to say that. He said, "Why did you sign the agreement?" And they said, "It would be over my dead body before I ever signed an agreement with the Board of Selectmen." They haven't honored ours, and I wouldn't honor yours, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the reserve fund transfers that we are, let me just find them here. Here we are. So first, there is a transfer from the reserve fund to the library expenses account. Would you like to tell us about that?
Sure. The library is requesting $6,200 to replace the, replace the drop-off, library drop-off box, which is damaged beyond repair by unknown motorists during the storm of February 13th and 14th. Someone hit the box, destroyed it, and it's below our insurance threshold, and they don't have those kind of funds within their operating budget.
That certainly meets the definition of what an unforeseen, extraordinary and unforeseen, that's what we need reserve fund transfers for, so.
Okay, thank, no, thank you. Thank you, Ted. I'll make a motion that we recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the library expenses account in the amount of $6,200.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is $10,000 for Fire Department Emergency Hydrants Account.
Correct. There is a fire hydrant on a property on County Way, Country Drive, that I went and looked at last week with Chief Duff. And I have to say, I was shocked that this fire hydrant was there, and that no one had ever said anything about it in the town so many years. The fire hydrant is approximately 10 or so feet from the front steps, right in the middle of someone's front yard. Essentially, it is right in the middle of the yard. The water main runs along the edge of the town's, the town right-of-way, but actually in what is the grassed yard area of the property owner. And then, instead of being stubbed towards the street, it was stubbed towards the home. So you can imagine a, you know, that front yard, and now the water line was a little further in, and then the stub from the fire hydrant goes the wrong direction towards the house. Literally, you walk out the front steps of this individual's house, his homeowner's home, and you stumble over the fire hydrant. They're trying to sell their property, and it's proving extremely difficult for them. It's our obligation, it should never have been there. And Mark would like to move it to the edge of the property and on the other side of the right-of-way, if possible. I've spoken with John Walsh from Aquarian to confirm, just to get a little history of, you know, how does something like this happen? And the best we can recollect, as people have changed over the years, this is something that happened 30 years ago. I think it's actually 40, 1955 it was installed. No one, we have no one here working at that point in time still with us. And what we've found is that the, that the road was put in after the water lines were put in, and the developer who originally did the project left, and someone else followed suit, and it was finished a little differently.
17 feet differently.
So, you know, obviously, we have much more tighter controls than 1955 with our planning board, with conditions to make sure that the plans are put into place properly. So this is now our obligation, our liability, and Mark does not have that kind of funding within his operating budget.
And I assume the work can be done.
And the work can be done.
Okay.
And I will also point out that that's an upper limit. You know, that is a little more than we usually spend for a fire hydrant. If we don't, then obviously, those funds will be returned. But Mark doesn't know, neither do we know, or the DPW, what we're going to find when we start digging in that area. You know, some are easy to do, some are a little more complex.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the Fire Department Emergency Hydrants account in the amount of $10,000.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next thing, item on the agenda is the, taking a look at the budget.
I'm sorry. When you, you have my.
Sorry.
Thanks.
We recommended a budget to the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee made some changes in it. They're going to recommend the budget with those changes to the town meeting, and the question is, shall we support those changes? So maybe you could just tell us what they are.
Sure. The only change that you have not endorsed in your previous comments, but never having taken formal votes, was the library. The Advisory Committee decided to, if you remember, the library request was for money for custodial support. Originally, my recommendation supported that. Then they came forward with a request for books and periodicals of $20,000. And after sitting with Dennis Corcoran, the library director, I decided to switch and recommend the $25,000 for books and periodicals. The Advisory Committee decided to split the baby, and a portion for custodial and a portion for library books and periodicals. I understand the library department is extremely happy with that. I'm a little agnostic about that myself. So it's the same dollars, and if they'd like to see it allocated a little differently, I don't have an issue. I would certainly recommend that to you. The others are group insurance, this is just reaffirming the final forecasted numbers that were part of the budget, workers' compensation, and the principal in interest on debt service.
Okay. Very thorough. All set? Any questions? Okay. I'll make a motion that we amend the following budget votes, excuse me. In the library, in the salaries account, $1,223,094. In the expenses account, $256,016, for a total of $1,479,110. In the group insurance account, $6,305,485. For workman's, workers' compensation, $250,000. And for debt, a principal in the amount of $4,924,703. Interest, $2,443,521, for a total in the debt account of $7,368,224.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a few more votes that we need to take. You want to just go over these?
Sure. Okay. This is an auctioneer's license renewal, to renew the annual auctioneer's license of Scott McCullough to conduct auctions at the Broadcove Ballroom, 20 Broadcove Road, for the calendar year 2013.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. To designate members of the ad hoc Town Hall Study Committee as special municipal employees.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And finally, and this I do with great deal of enthusiasm, because she does wonderful work for us and for a whole bunch of other towns that call upon her, to nominate Leslie Badger as Inspector of Animals for the town.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to sign a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for the AD Beale Street project, as it appears in our folders tonight.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think that brings us to Selectmen Town Administrator Reports. Any there are?
I do not have anything, but I have an updated journal ready.
All I can talk about is water perck tests, regulations, land deals, and all the rest of it. So that's how I spent my week, and it was well worth the efforts. So I have nothing to report.
Okay. Great. Well, in that case, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We are going to continue our session as Board of Selectmen in the Advisory Committee room, where they're going to be hearing some articles, that they want some input from us. So we'll be adjourning to the Advisory Committee.
All right, thank you.
We're not adjourning, we are moving.
Moving.
Thank you.
And that is not televised, I understand.
I don't know.
No, I heard it's not. So.